I'm sorry.
In fact, just put them down in the office.
Okay.
In our cross, we will call our meeting for, please, Bob, it here, Rob.
Here.
Yes. We do a form here. Hey, would you leave this for us, Ron?
Sure. Oh, God, we just thank you for this time and our lives that we are here and that you just help us to be servants of the people and servants to you. Thank you for your son that died on the cross for us and sacrificed himself for us. I ask the special blessing for every family represented here and that you help, wise decisions be made, that you help us to encourage those that need encouragement and just go with us today, guide, lead, and direct in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Scott, would you just come on, just want to charge my case?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you sit down, Cindy, the chief?
No, I'll sit down.
Yeah. I'll get out of the way.
Okay.
And so you kick that heater off, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Almost Peter's gonna stick him down there. I will go up here right now.
Thank you, thanks.
Yes.
So I acknowledge that the agenda was properly posted in accordance to the opening act. Thank you.
Consider an appeal from November 5, 2018.
Hello? Yes, Brian, how you doing?
You recognize the team. I did too.
No, I just started our, we started our commissioners dating over here at Medford and stuff. If you've got, if you've got something, you can just drop it by my, my, my.
Yeah, me too.
Oh.
Do we have a motion for proof?
Okay, it should say, you'll see Max S on the side of the mailbox and stuff.
A second back.
That writes out the title.
But the second to prove the minutes from November 5, 2018.
Yeah, it's, it's only six.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
I like that.
It's over.
Comments from the public on the below agenda?
Do what?
Er. I have a quick one.
Uh, no.
I turned in a travel claim for Steven.
Not open.
But I think different than normal. He was on, he hadn't got a dial last week.
Pickup there had a.
And we typed in zip code or something on our fuel card. It invalidated it.
Oh.
And so they actually, they canceled the card right there and called our office to make sure he was actually there.
Okay.
So he had to buy one tank of gas with his own money. So on the miscellaneous, I kind of had to write in fuel on my own, but that's what that's for.
Thank you. All right, I don't know if that transfer.
I mean, they called us and go, hey, your card could be used in Dallas. We shut it off temporarily.
That's good though.
We're like, no, he's there.
Wouldn't it have made a difference if he had called before?
No, I think when they asked for zip code, I think he hit it, didn't access maybe.
I see, yeah.
But immediately.
Okay, that was canceled. Yeah, that was canceled. The 94 was for, what, Best West? Oh, yeah.
But that's pretty good.
I'll say. I'm glad to see him doing that.
Did he run this by you?
Well, he usually tells me where he's going and stuff, yes. That's why.
They won't be there.
Oh, I don't know, I can find out.
That's all right. You know, a lot of times we secure it with our credit cards, but we really prefer to have it direct. But it just kind of.
I work all night in this night, so.
Thank you.
So.
Second to prove the payment of the P card for $94 for Brandon Fellers for a hotel.
Probably stay for all.
Wrong. Yes.
Aye.
I'm going to review purchases.
I'll come in and test seconds to, you know, review payment of purchases and travel claims on there. Bobbit? Aye. Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
This one's still this morning.
That's not good.
I know it. I know it.
Wow.
And those two.
Yeah, absolutely.
He's over and out.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Yes.
You should manage.
I can only have people go to a straight party this last. Did you see that?
Oh, no.
Over 30,000, probably, and 162,000. Straight party. Means they're voting for party, not the man or woman.
Almost half a million.
Yeah.
That's about 40% of the vote.
So, I know we've had this before, I'll just refresh my memory on the water with the, the treasurer, I mean, the assessor and the election deal. The bill is 2350, did it split that half and half or the, I mean, it's odd amount, I mean, it's an odd amount, there's a difference there, I didn't know how to do that.
Hello, a question on the advanced, on the assessor. Because the bill is 2350, it's something about, the bill is 2355. Oh, it's, it's split to the election board. Oh, okay, gosh. Oh, I see. Okay, if we read, we see it. Thank you. Okay.
But, but, so it's not half and, I mean, it's not half and half, it's an odd amount. I mean, if it's half and half, it's coming on 75 and they're coming up with some odd numbers. So, okay, I'll just, I'll, let's flag that aside and we get to that other, make sure that adds up.
Sure, sure.
I just didn't know if they.
Yeah. Or the election board.
Yeah, look and see what it is to see if it adds up to that 43.
1995.
That's what I said.
Oh, here we go.
Yeah.
Because apparently it showed this is where it is. They've got elect, assessor.
Oh, two of them are, okay.
There's the election.
Okay, got you. All right, so they do, they just, they just put it on the bill, but they don't share. I got you. All right, thank you. There we go. This one's just called.
Oh, does it not go with that phone?
I think it might, yeah, I think it does.
Well, I would have thought that electric bill would have been five bit lower. I mean, you guys didn't have to run air conditioners all the while, did you? 1433 dollars.
For last.
But I guess I wonder with them being, you know, ten.
Oh.
Some windows, some windows will still be replaced.
Have they still got small windows? We haven't.
We have windows, is there still a couple windows?
There's, there's about two thirds of our bottom floors left and the whole east side of the jail.
Okay, outside door, we missed today.
They are. In my building. Downstairs.
How long have you worked the night shift? You didn't remember that?
I've got some little heaters at home if I need to bring them up for you.
So do mine.
They're pretty good. They, they shut the door and kind of isolate themselves whenever they're doing that.
I think they were doing most of the flies were so bad and they kind of made a little plastic cocoon.
Okay, so why wouldn't it just go on that blanket?
Because it's an extra part of it, it's not the, it's not the monthly fee. I mean, these churches, I never know if you do that in corporate churches for extra things that we got just.
You want to sign that as the top?
Oh, sorry.
No, all the dispatchers have training today, so I covered a dispatch shift overnight and Deputy Bell's covering one right now and.
You tell him to bring his partner?
Because we have to start collecting DNA off of all felony arrests now and somebody knows, so they're going to train.
Good training for that.
Yeah.
When does he go to? What word is it, Woodward, kind of?
Yeah, I don't know yet. Whenever they get their background done.
Yeah. Kind of, it's growing. I'm now through there. This district is really pretty nice.
Sounds like my building.
He flushed the toilet in a second. Right below the toilet.
Like my building.
Yesterday they took.
So this was the same?
Yesterday they took away that ceiling fan because it was kind of, that was good. So I was worried about it falling.
Now, on this, one on Conner phone, since he's changed over the first and if that should be his last bill, right, on that deal?
I thought we were keeping that phone for a while.
No, because he got that one, went around and did everything, so.
Oh, okay.
Has he turned in his old phone to use now? We'll probably get that.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm just saying, this and that.
Yeah, that's my own.
That was on that phone yesterday.
We don't put on that. Okay. Let me know, make that two.
Nice. You can just write that little short explanation on that, some of that.
Oh, on top?
In, in a year, I won't bring that one up. If someone asks me, auditor says something, I'll bring it up.
Probably, probably it's already tired, or has it?
It's.
Is it the parking lot?
Yeah, those lights.
Ah.
Out here.
Okay, so it's just a light bulb?
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
You put fuel tanks in back of pickup, got it.
Yeah. Well, there are times that we need them for people that run out of gas.
They do. The what?
And these are all just symbols, aren't they?
That'd be able to have that account.
Why?
Oh, okay.
Why is it just now?
I don't know. Why isn't that a general expense? Should that be?
We haven't added for more lighting, for security.
Oh, okay.
So we pay for it out of the courthouse security.
Is it about the same time that we turn the flashes from around?
Probably, yes. Mm-hmm. That's when those big lights came.
Yes.
Showed up.
I remember that. We didn't have to pay it.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, because we have one on this side and then there's that one right out here.
Right. I like it when it's covered on and put it down into the basement, you know? To keep the water in.
Yeah, it bothers you, isn't it, Chris?
Well, it'll help us, but everything else will help more than any.
Yeah.
Anything.
Okay. Somebody bought 48 ounces of coffee and paid almost $26, but that's one, it's fifty.
Yeah. Many cups of coffee.
Oh.
We had run out and I got up to the grocery store and I bought some. We were dying in that day and the one I got was off the side and we got two of them for $26.
Yeah.
We go through the coffee.
These are all.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, looks like there's going to be quite a few of them.
Somebody, you might need to get out, so she probably needs to give them one for more every month, and she had 60 ounces, 60 others for some reason.
Oh, okay.
You're going to stop the online.
Oh, yeah. It's electric board. It's like off the other better part of it.
What's that?
No, they're boring.
A new... Didn't it? When do we take off? Sometimes more than.
That's enough.
No, we're still going.
Tell my guys to go down.
Don't run that district two, district three stuff.
Oh, is that what it is? Nag gone. Well, this is small compared to last week.
Yeah. He's just complaining about his district. The repairs.
Yeah. Oh, I see.
That said in two thirty, didn't he? Boom, more.
Yeah. No, 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 sorry. That's my old tractor that I held over that they used to do the back end part.
Oh, okay.
Did he leave?
Yeah, the hydraulic pump went out. Just scared it.
At first, he didn't think it would come back. Why?
He come back. We were having trouble, we were having trouble with him upstairs. He was horrible. He's horrible upstairs. Messes up this thing. So, this is it.
Yeah, most recent. It's pretty sad now. Please, the whole thing, isn't it?
Well, these are worn, is that beyond us?
Yeah.
I can't see, that's not working. Oh, jeez. He must be coming. He must have left.
Commissioner Bobble, if you'll give me about a ten-minute warning when you want under sheriff over here, I'll call him and let him know.
Okay.
Or a short notice, that way...
Got you.
You don't have to wait too long.
So, we can get on with his business letters, finish up his purchase orders, and then we can cap him off, or so that's what they're about.
What number is that?
Well, it's, uh...
It's E.
Oh, E.
E there. Thank you.
It's right after your blanket, so...
Yeah.
It's up there.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, it'd probably be, uh, we got these, probably about fifteen minutes.
About fifteen minutes.
About fifteen minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
What's your Thanksgiving plans if you're staying home?
No. I think I'm staying home.
Me too.
Yeah.
Maybe not for Christmas, I don't know yet. Next year, it'll be nice to have these days, this time.
Didn't even look.
Good.
What do we got? There's a Thursday, Friday world next week.
Yes, Thursday, Friday.
So, that'd be the same for Christmas, Thursday, Friday.
We had known that Christmas is only Tuesday.
Oh.
So, we get Christmas Eve and Christmas Day.
Oh, Monday, Tuesday.
Next year, it's Christmas weekend.
So, basically, you don't have that.
Yeah. I have a very long weekend.
Nice.
It is.
Wish I could just close my eyes.
Next year, we have the day after Christmas, so that we could travel home.
I don't know.
Maybe.
Oh, yeah.
You know. That might turn on Christmas if you break down anything. Nothing.
You're right.
You had sickness over there?
A little, but not bad.
Not sick.
Little.
I guess it was around three days ago.
That's, yeah. I worked in overnight dispatch one night last week, I guess, 'cause of sickness.
You did too.
Yeah. And that's getting pretty desperate, 'cause I'm not a big dispatcher. I show up, and I'm like, the boss has to do this, nobody's gonna be careful. We ain't running no kind of thing. I'm just here to do prisoners' lives, okay?
You can't really get rid of it.
No. Wow.
Commissioner Bobble, I went back and looked at your email. Sure enough, it's right there on the very end.
Sorry, I shouldn't have put that at the...
I read about the letter, and then I just...
Said, okay, that's good.
Scroll down and hit the attachment. Yeah.
Well, you got the important stuff done.
What are you looking for, Jim, there?
I'm glad you called me.
Hello, Pete, we'll be ready here in just a moment. Thank you.
I make motion to approve.
Pass move on second to to approve payment for disorderment in traffic as presented all over. Bobble. Aye, wrong.
Aye.
Pass.
Aye.
Oh, I supposed to carry unanimously. Do we have any blankets?
None.
We want sign in.
I'd be under.
You guys have to sign in a little bit.
Sure.
Sorry about that.
You're welcome to sit here.
Yeah, he was helping the court clerk with something, and then he would be down. I don't know. Is that what it is?
Jason Bryan. And David Moore.
Thank you. Thank you.
She's not here today. We'll go ahead and just do some preliminary stuff here.
Okay.
Uh, the CAT six cables, we evidently contacted, uh, your business to come in and put in it, and after the fact, I was contacted last week on the CAT six cables, and we were not sure what you were doing was compatible to the system we have. And so, we, since we, we didn't know you were going to be here today, uh, we thought you were coming tomorrow, so obviously, we wanted to get some information on that before we had you show up to do a job, because we weren't sure that it was going to be compatible. So, um, our, the guy, the IT guy from the sheriff's department that all, that presently has a server, it's all down, and the sheriffs, and we're trying to get some of that moved over here, and he's way more familiar with that technology than I am. I, I, I know enough to know it's a cable running out of the wall, so, um, with that, we'll just see where we're at and try to get him down, so we can make sure we're kind of all on the same page.
If, if I may add, though, Brandon and I did go and look, and our current connection is a CAT six, so I don't understand why he thinks it's not going to be compatible.
Yeah, CAT six is by far the best cable out, I mean...
Yeah, that, that's it, we do already have CAT six.
Well, not completely.
No, no, we, right, on some of the stuff, but, and I'm going to let Tim explain it to you, because I certainly am not going to pretend to know.
Neither will I.
Okay.
Because this, I mean, CAT five, he had said something about voiceover IP and that type of thing, but you can go over CAT six on that, right?
Yeah, that's even better, especially over long distances and stuff.
Well, let's just wait on two.
I don't even say what I can, because I'm...
Could get us in trouble.
I'll get in trouble.
You know, enough to make me dangerous.
Real fast, so... Would you guys like a bottle of water or something?
No, I have one in the track behavior.
Coffee, but there aren't any coffees.
I think I checked my food up.
Trying to get warm.
Yeah.
Do you have a quick agenda item you could knock out while we're waiting? Maybe?
Dina's stuff.
That saves you a little time, on the backside.
I believe that we adjust to item H.
I know that Dina didn't have that this morning.
Oh, G. And approve the state expenditure from DA's office.
Second.
Oh, no, it has said to make the skip to item G and to approve the state expenditure from the DA's office, all in favor?
Bobbitt.
Aye.
Ma.
Aye.
Pass.
All eyes motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
I make a motion to be approved the state payroll voucher for the election board secretary for October twenty eighteen.
Second.
Pass, move on, seconded to pay, state payroll claim voucher for the election board secretary for October twenty eighteen, all in favor?
Bobbitt. Aye. Wrong.
Aye.
Pass. Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously.
Update on repayment number two from the fair board, sales tax, which is alternative tendencies. Uh, we were able to pay back eight thousand five hundred ninety-two eighty-one, leaving a remaining one in the balance due before July first, and five thousand two hundred seventy-three. I think they'll probably maybe get that paid off next month.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, we need to acknowledge that.
I acknowledge, make a motion to acknowledge, second.
Pass, move on, seconds to acknowledge the update for payment, repayment number two from the fair board, improvement sales tax to the general fund, and now the, uh, eight thousand five hundred ninety-two eighty-one.
It's eleven thousand.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Oh, well, the first day, yeah, excuse me, eleven thousand two hundred forty-six fifty-two, got you. Is that, okay, if you may, is that your motion?
Yes, yes, that is.
All in favor?
Bobbitt. Aye. Wrong.
Aye.
Pass.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously.
I left that one on, I didn't know if I needed to.
I don't think they're, I don't think, Mommy's got that yet, does it?
No.
No. Uh, the annual contract payment grant time, military extension.
I called up to the DA's office, I don't think he's reviewed it yet.
Still under review, our ADA, young, who left the records show, no action. Uh, acknowledged, thank you, propose, no action, not ready. Update on the grant, uh, uh, that's going to take a little bit.
Yeah.
So, um... Do we have, we don't want more time, yes? Do we know what time it is?
Dina was having internet trouble, I know.
I'll run up, I want her to run upstairs real quick.
Get him on.
So, we will, let's see, and that one, probably got Steven. Okay, so, we're kind of, well, um, let's wait until short recess.
Move to recess, second.
Wrong, no, it has seconded to short recess at nine fifty-six. Let's see what we're at, I apologize.
All in favor?
Oh, excuse me.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Bobbitt.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Pass.
Aye.
All eyes, we are officially recessed.
Matt, you can't vote three times.
You can vote as many times as you want.
I know.
Take a look at Florida.
Aye, aye, aye.
They are back.
I was waiting on Max.
Oh.
Tim, would you sign in? Friday, you could sign in?
No.
I have to sign in.
Anytime you can come in this room for me, you have to sign in.
Oh, Tim, will you sign my name for me?
Who are you, Daffy Duck or Mickey Mouse? Who are you?
Rotating again. What's that word?
Honorary.
Should make a move.
So, yes, moved wrong seconds to come out recessed back to open session at ten oh one on the paper.
Father.
Aye.
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 All eyes must be paid and asleep. We are down, uh, we're moving back up to item E and F on the installation of the Cat six cables, uh, for the county parks and accessory office as well as the cage for the server in the clerk's office. Um, I know Brandon had reached out to try to find someone to bid that, uh, and we got one successful person that came back for the bid. And since that time, uh, Tim, I talked to Tim. He caught me out, uh, outside one day and was just asking me about the Cat six cables because there's a quite a, quite a process to get it all hooked in. And Tim, I'm gonna turn it over to you because if I say something, it'll be wrong and I don't want to get it wrong. So please explain it to us.
The only thing I didn't know is why we just didn't run what we needed from what we already had from second floor. So where we have Cat six cables in place to all the offices.
One on one but the other offices. We have Cat six, we have all Cat, do we have, okay, on second floor, we have all Cat six cables. Yes or no?
There's a few in the assessor that doesn't have them yet because they weren't enough put in at the time. There's been devices added.
That's the first floor.
Right.
Okay. But...
But everybody that has a phone has a Cat six cable. That's what runs the phone. So...
We're not just moving the phone. Right, okay, so, so in the meantime, we was needing to get our servers moved over here and for the servers to come over here, they need a Cat six.
Right.
For, yeah, for need to run the new cable to hook up the server over there. The assessor's office has to have new per the state. When they came in, they want them to run new lines. That's why...
To be compatible with their new program.
They came in and said they want a new line run. That was beyond my control whatsoever.
So, right, no, but, and I think we all agree that we're in agreement that we need those Cat six. That's not the, that's not the issue here. The issue is, is are we making it bigger? And Tim, you explained to me how all the lines had to fit in to go into the main system that goes out into the big broad world.
Well, eventually, I mean, even if you're on your own office, if you want internet and phones, you're still gonna have to be plugged into the second floor. So you, you're not, every office can't, unless everybody gets their own fiber connection in here, not everybody's gonna be a standalone office. It, that's not, and that's why we did what we did, to go away from what we had. So was save money for everybody. Yes, it went up for some people, but it went down tremendously for others, so...
And the concern is, we don't know if what they bid will fit into our system. Is that, can you, can you guys have a dialogue to work this out? What they, they're planning on doing?
If you wanna continue with what you're doing and you wanna, you want them to network your whole office, it needs to have a main switch 'cause we need to be able to run more than one V LAN through the system. So the phones are on a separate V LAN than the computers.
So what are, what did, what did you bid, Brandon? What did you ask to be bid? What, when did we bid?
What they did was run all new lines over here, just replace whatever's there was in pretty much the exact same way. All they're doing different.
They're not gonna replace the Cat six that's already there.
They're putting in all new lines.
That's what the bid says.
Yes, all new lines.
So they're replacing all the, the Cat six lines we already have, they're replacing those?
They're replacing everything with new lines per what Anita and Robin said the state requested. They had a list from the state on what they wanted done and that's what, that's what they told whenever they came in to do it. So that's what we bid it out because that's what the state told them to do.
And Cindy, and...
And you can ask Anita, she's got the list, she can bring it over to you, um, right over there of what the state told them they wanted.
So can I chime in on that?
Yes, please.
Okay, so how about we keep the infrastructure that's for the voice, the phones, to where they are on the Cat six going upstairs, but the internet for the computers and the printers be on that new server that the state's requiring you to do?
That's, uh, two, yes.
Does that make sense? Keeping the voice?
It makes sense, but my whole deal is I don't know why we need to spend twenty-eight dollars per office when we can just run seven lines and it'd be a lot cheaper, but that's just me. I don't care one way or the other.
I, I want my server completely away.
You can put your server in your office.
I'm not, that's fine. I was, my concern what had nothing to do with the phone lines at this point. I was, my whole concern was to, I wanted to get the server out of the sheriff's office basement and into the county clerk's office. And I think we're still doing that. The, the question is, I think the biggest question is, is cost. Um, I think we're paying twenty-eight hundred dollars per office and, and it's just for the, the Cat, and walk me through this, Tim, because I, you said something about it should be about seven hundred and fifty an office.
Well, no, I'm saying, uh, that was on the Kelpro deal, but that's neither here nor there. I'm just saying, why run twelve in that office, twelve in this office when you only need two in that one and four in this one? And you can run to the second floor to the infrastructure we already have.
Okay, so basically put the server upstairs and divide those.
Well, no, the server can go in her office. It just needs an ethernet cable to where the server, wherever she puts her server. The only thing that server does is, is their Kelpro in her office. She's not gaining anything by moving it to her office. It's gonna do the same thing in her office as it does in my basement.
Right, but it's under my control and not yours.
Right, I don't have control of it either. I don't, I don't have any credentials to it.
Well, it's whoever put it in, I called Kelpro and there is no tracking of anybody, but that, they said whoever has that server down in their office and powers it up, that's the admin on it. So no one here has admin. I'm just saying, they don't know who the admin is and I don't know who the admin is, but that's something I need to know.
But we're not the admin.
But it, to get the server over here, and that's a done deal. We're, we're getting the server.
Right, I'm the other, yeah, yeah, it needs to be moved over here.
What we're, what our discussion here today is the, the Cat six lines and I'm just concerned, you know, twenty-eight, we're paying, you know, fifty-six hundred dollars basically for, and I'm not sure what. That's my question. I don't know what we're buying for fifty-six hundred dollars.
Want me to give you a copy of the quote?
Well, I, I have the quote, but...
But what I'm saying is everybody's office already has all Cat six cables to it. Except for the assessors, they're the ones that has the least amount. I don't know how many they need, five, six, seven, I don't know how many. But it would make more sense to run them to the switch we have upstairs and less money than it would be to network each office over when there's already that there.
So explain to me, uh, I'm sorry, I don't, you, explain to me, Jason, what it is you bid, I mean, as far as the, the networking and where the wires are going to and from and how that works. Like, should we going up to our second floor to go into whatever we have or...
I don't have an opinion on that.
Yeah, okay, so what, so what are you doing? You're doing what?
They're doing the install. They're, they're not wanting to bid, he's not wanting to bid now.
Okay, but he's doing, so, but he ought to know what he's installing. I mean, what's it doing? Is it just going to serve that? The assessor's office is right here, the clerk's office is over there. We're getting, uh, moving one of our servers from the sheriff's office over there. Now, is the assessor, they're not tying into your servers, are they? No, no.
They're tying into their own server and...
They've got their own server. So the Cat six lines that you're going to be installing are going directly to their server and to their deal and it goes nowhere else? Is that, is that, I, I don't want to oversimplify it. And that's it. So, Tim, why do we...
Are you running something from the first floor to the second floor to hook into the rest of the network?
Not per a quote.
Nope.
So what's that gonna do to us?
Well, it's not gonna do anything to it except for the people they put in their office. They're not, they're just gonna have their own network inside there. They won't have internet or phones.
Well, uh... We already talked about that.
Yeah, the Cat six that you have already installed, we will...
So you're gonna take one of those and plug it into your switch?
Yeah.
Good.
And that's how I want mine. I, I want internet or I want the phone to be networked, but everything else I just want within our office. And that's what we're doing.
Pretty much what they do is they're putting in a switch in her office. We're running all the cables over there.
That's what you have, isn't it?
And we're gonna run a cable, one of the cables that's already coming down over their office, we're moving over to a switch.
So it's wired over there, there's no wiring.
I know the location is, but there's nobody has access to your server. It's with Kelpro.
Cable from the second floor.
It's already there.
Except for Kelpro.
They don't have access.
They have access. They jump on there all the time.
All we're doing is housing it 'cause it was a safe place.
Right, and I get that, but I don't want it housed there anymore. It should have never been put there in the first place. Okay, so let's get back to what we're doing here.
So I guess the better way to say this is there's eight chairs in this boardroom and say two more people come in and we need to have them sit down, you're gonna buy ten chairs instead of buying two. That's where I'm at. Why are you gonna redo all the Cat six cables?
I didn't realize we had Cat six cables already there, but the only one that's there is the one that's going to the phone. The rest of them are not Cat six cables.
I have no clue. All I know is...
I looked, they're Cat five and Cat fours.
There you go. That's all I know is when I looked at it...
The only Cat six is our, is our phone.
And out the back of your phone goes into your computer and your printers are plugged into Cat six or they wouldn't be working.
Yeah, that's how it is.
Everything that's on the network right now is on Cat six, except for in the assessor's office.
Well, I mean, the guy came out and looked, right? We need to get him on, do we need to get him on the phone, your boss?
Kipper.
Well, I, I, I understand and I, and I agree, we need to get your server into your office. But my guess, if you run more, walk me through this, you guys aren't gonna get any more Cat six cables off the second floor. You're just gonna have your one Cat six cable, correct?
They're gonna put it to the phone.
You can put it to the phone. And that's it. And everything else is just within her office. So nothing else is, if she wants to, uh, add another, another computer or something like that, then must she have to have another Cat six line to connect another computer? So it can't all, but if he was on this other...
Well, it's the same way. I mean, if you add devices, you're gonna have to run a Cat six, whether you run it in her office or you run it all the way to the second floor. I mean, if she thinks there's gonna be something in the future, I would run a couple more, but I don't, I mean, that's neither here nor there.
So any lines, okay, I guess it's probably like a running house.
We're gonna do, it's gonna, we're gonna have, well, you can plug in two at each outlet.
Okay.
And two, two plugs each.
This is the one. Okay, this is clerk's. Now this says assessor. Is this one? That's like the one fifty.
One says clerk and one says assessor.
Yeah, but I think they're wrong 'cause isn't yours the one with the, the wall mount? That says the assessors, isn't it?
They, they have one, two going up on theirs for their new servers that are coming in.
Okay, so that, that is right. These, this is the assessors?
Yeah.
And that is the clerk's. All right, so... All right, so, so that's how you guys want it? You want it all individual instead of running it off the second floor?
So eventually, while we're on the subject in the board meeting, you're gonna have to get a switch for upstairs for the rest of the courthouse. So that needs to be...
Thank you.
Talked about.
So, so...
I mean, that was the point I'm trying to make is you could spend what you're fixing to spend for these two offices for the rest of the whole courthouse. But, I mean, that doesn't, I don't...
Do I have to be on some other system other than mine, mom?
I, I'm, I'm just, it's to the point that it's better to, I mean, I agree. I mean, I don't wanna, we just need to cut it and be done, so...
The segregation.
But, Tim, this is not going to affect the...
Not at this point, but I'm saying if you want, if you want to be on your own from the sheriff's office, I mean, you still have OSU and Penny and the commissioner's office and, I mean, everybody else in the courthouse that's still running on our hardware.
Right. I, I don't want it.
So if you want somebody else to manage all of that, you need to get your own hardware and put it in and have somebody manage it. And I'm not, I don't mean that rudely or mean or anything else, so I mean, but if we're gonna cut the ties, we need to either do that or don't do that. I mean, I don't care one way or the other, so... And yes, the phones, if you wanna continue to plug the phones that they're in, in, and you can run them on what's in her office, that'll work. That's not a problem. But I also don't know if you're gonna run, why you're gonna run one to the phone and run one to the desktop if you're gonna use ours for the phone, so...
Well, I think the bid says they're not gonna use your phone.
Okay.
The, the bid says they're out. You're, they won't have your phone or your internet, I guess, right?
That means extra hardware will need to be part of this thing.
No, well, if they plug in, if they plug into one of the Cat sixes...
They put all new lines in.
Why would they put in a new line that's gonna be exactly like the line they're putting this there? I mean, if it's our Cat six and you're gonna take a Cat six out and put a Cat six in and it's gonna hook into the same end and the same out, why are we doing that? I don't see need for that. I don't either, but explain it to me. Well, explain to me, Ray.
Sorry, it's bad. So they're not, what we're doing is just running the new lines so we can have the server in her office, okay? While we're doing that, they decided to run, since we're running, installing all new lines over here, that we put in, replace the existing lines over there, the ones that weren't Cat five, the ones that weren't Cat six or whatever. Uh, just to put in new lines. If we're gonna run new lines, four of them, might as well just replace all of them, get it done right, and I'll have to come back to it later.
So they're running twelve Cat six lines to the assessor's office and they're running fourteen Cat six lines to the clerk's office?
They're running drops here from, that's correct, yes.
And one of those drops is going to be the phone and the internet that we already had Cat six lines on, is that correct?
They're gonna use one of the existing Cat sixes that goes there already to plug into their switch to make the internet and phones work.
Exactly.
Actually, make the internet work. They're gonna keep the phones plugged into what they're already plugged into now to make them work.
But it's not gonna be a new drop. No.
One of these.
I don't totally understand it, but that's...
I don't either, but, I mean, do we have a choice? I don't wanna be taken off my system.
No, this is just the clerk's office.
Well, I, I get it, but if they have a main switch that they wanna do upstairs and have for themselves, then I don't wanna be, I wanna be on the sheriff's system.
You're, you are, Penny, your office is, nothing's changing.
Okay.
Well, and that's what came up is we have to remove some of their lines because we're already gonna move their server and just run, so their server could be networked in. Whenever we decided to...
But then hopefully they're working, it's just gonna be their office.
It's just their office can get on the server, they'll still be able to get on to the internet.
Which will cost more, correct?
No.
It'll cost more originally to get it all installed, but...
For the lines, yeah, it's gonna cost more. But the only reason we added the new lines in there was because we were doing all new lines in the assessors and I brought it to Cindy and we talked about replacing their lines so we could have the new lines.
I didn't realize that we had the Arctic Cat six.
Yeah, that's, that's how that came about. That's why we did all the drops.
We can go count them right now. I can tell you how many Cat six lines are in each office. I mean, it's not that big a deal. Everything that's got a jack is, that we put in three years ago was Cat six.
But what, but so...
And they're, they're, that white cable that runs right there, that's all Cat six lines. That goes upstairs.
We can see them.
But this is just, but this is, this, this isn't to, to network with...
Upstairs.
This isn't to run upstairs, Tim. Now, I, this is just 'cause we wanna run in their office, so, I know.
It still has to come from upstairs. That's, I mean, that's still the...
Not, not all of them, right? Why do, do all of them? Is this, so without a switch, you mean?
No, they don't all have to come up from upstairs. It, it just, it doesn't, from a economical standpoint, it doesn't make sense to me and that's why it was my concern. But I spoke my piece, anyone can do what you wanna do.
It's segregation, in my opinion.
How's it segregating?
Because we're not tied into, I, I...
Yeah, but you are. Only buy one cable now instead of ten. I mean, what's the difference?
Do you, I mean, I don't understand enough of that part of it either.
What are you saying is, instead of having lines that come down and run to every computer, okay, we're just gonna have one coming down, come in the switch to get everybody internet. That's the difference.
You're gonna, instead of, instead of having all lines coming out here, you're, you're still gonna have one line goes into that that's going up there. So it's all still tied.
We still have to have all lines.
You still have to be tied in. This is not gonna segregate yet. Right. This will not segregate.
We're still gonna be on the internet from up there.
So is that...
All I was wanting was the server over here where we had access to the server. That's all my...
But you're getting that.
Well, I know, that's what I'm...
Well, right, it would sound a little bit more simpler to move the server where you want and you're running one line to it and be done.
Yes, and cheaper.
And if you need additional lines in your office, we can run them while we're running them. I, the only one I would think you'd need is your reception computer because it's running off a switch off of Alex's desk.
Why wasn't that brought up two weeks ago?
I've never been talked to about any of this since it started.
Well, okay, so we know the assessor's office needs to be...
The assessor's office does.
So can we let these gentlemen go?
Well, they, the assessor's office really doesn't need to be redone either.
One line.
Well, I wonder if the state just hadn't realized.
That's it. That's it. They haven't had the explanation, you don't think?
The problem in the assessor's office is there's three switches in there.
I don't know.
Maybe that's too possible.
Well, talking to them, no one will.
Well, let me ask you, will it?
What?
Are you an internet guy? If, if we run completely separate lines down here and have the server here, but it is gonna be tied into the internet?
Educated decisions last time.
I mean, um, to me, it seems like you can use the infrastructure that you have and have the server upstairs or wherever you wanna manage it and it would, with the, with the right person doing the IT part of that, they would be able to figure that out.
Which is in Duncan, Oklahoma.
With Kelpro.
For that server.
Yeah, and they come on remotely all the time for us.
Well, we were told by then, we were told by Kelpro that we needed to drop new lines, so that's why, that's why I went for that.
Did they come up with it?
Um, let's see, what they do, I can't remember.
I don't remember.
It was Nathan. But I, I mean, I understand the need of, of Cat six. That's, that I understand. The part I don't understand is where they come from and goes to. That's what I don't understand.
Yeah, yeah, just like, well, she's got her list right there. She brought with her, what the state told her.
Can I get Kelpro on the line? Cause they're the ones who told me that we needed to have lines dropped before they come up and be... Lines dropped, but what does that mean?
Well, I had, I still have the one line with Tim in the sheriff's office and I've had new computers with Kelpro and yes, I did have to drop a line or whatever, but it wasn't anything extra. It wasn't, I mean, obviously, our courthouse is outdated in electrical...
Sure, that's what we're doing.
I know, right?
Yes, yes.
But we still have to, yeah, but dropping a line may not be exactly what these guys know as dropping a line. You know what I'm saying?
Well, they, well, they might have been told, this is what we, they're, they've been told they want, and they, they, no, they've been...
Sure.
What they've been told to bid.
Exactly. They did what they were supposed to.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but did we understand what we needed?
No, that's not, no, we did not understand what we needed.
I know.
That's the issue here. And these people are caught in the middle.
Yeah, I know. Sorry.
This is Chinese, right?
It's warm there, so that's...
It's warm in here, but it'll be okay.
You guys wanna? Give a copy or tell them what?
Yes.
You're giving from the state?
We were given that from Michael Chalice at the Oklahoma, well, in our, our C cap. They're the ones that take care of our server and our snapshot server. And he said because we are getting, because of all the remodeling, he suggested we go ahead and do the Cat six because when we get our new system in a year to two years, we will have to have the Cat six. So that's the only reason. He brought that to our attention. He said that we really kinda need that because it will make our programs run faster. That's just the same thing. But, yeah, I agree. This is, we're having no problem with the Cat six. Our problem is we're not knowing where to drop the lines from and to. This is the, the piece of paper that I just handed you, or somebody did, is the diagram that he likes to have run in the offices. He handed that to me and he said this is really kinda how I like to have it ran and that's what we're going off of. What was suggested to us from the state.
Have you seen that, Tim?
No, I haven't.
I can... Is this Kelpro? Do you need him on the line or...
I don't know. I, I feel like... Well, here's the deal. They, they bid on the deal, we awarded it to them.
Yes.
But, I mean, we're, we're, we're held to, to do it.
I can't, we thought the reason I had to put it up, I can't make a decision. You can't make a decision. You're not his a board. You're the one who's gonna be here tomorrow, so we didn't talk to him.
Yeah, it's about moving the server and just...
And didn't know they were coming today.
Well, I didn't know this from, like, just that. I didn't know we were gonna be talking about it again. And the guy had called me next Saturday and said, they said it might take two days.
We're in the board meeting, I need to visit with him about our discussion, so if he's not available, I don't know.
Yeah, it already been, uh, agreed on for us. Oh, yeah, two, yeah.
Does Michael Seaver come over here?
Uh, he was just up last week.
Well, all this is done on the second floor. So with the Cat sixes you have in your office, they're color-coded with wires in and keep stone jacks.
I can, if you, if you wanna talk to him, I can go get him on the phone. I, I, all I know is what he has suggested to us. And I think we've just been told that it's done on the second floor.
Except for the additional, there needs to be, whatever they don't have here needs to be ran. I don't know how many that is.
Well, in the interest of time, I think we, I think you're right. I think we've awarded this. Hindsight is not a good way to do business. What do you want to do?
Well, we kinda caught up because we wasn't aware of the situation before we went out for the bids.
We, we didn't do our due diligence.
Yeah, that's actually the matter of the case, so we just need to go forward, compare that what we bid and drive to know it this time and that time be better.
All right, so, um, we just, we'll move forward.
Is there a copy of the kid down there?
Yes.
How are you? You feeling better?
Thank you.
A little bit. I'm still suffering.
Yeah.
I just can't get rid of it. It's just, it's just dangling around, it's hanging around.
You're still getting it. You're still getting some of it.
Okay, K, K, let's say K. Is that one ready? Let's do K, cause we have it, we're sort of moved down to I, K, and we're gonna address that. Uh, what is it?
So he signed off on it? Okay, I'm going to approve the annual contract between Grant County and OSU extension office for fiscal year two thousand nineteen nineteen.
I'll second that motion.
Wrong news, has seconds to move, to approve the annual contract between Grant County and OSU extension for FY eighteen. Y'all in favor?
Father?
Aye.
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Aye.
All eyes must be paid and asleep. And this was, I didn't check that scene. I'm assuming I'll go right and up and down.
I'll offer a copy of that.
Okay. Okay, well, next item, um...
Can we, can we hold on for just a second? Something does kinda concern me a little bit on, on, if we, on this, this other Cat six deal. You said we didn't do our due diligence. For me to be able to do my due diligence, it'd take me about ten years to figure this deal out.
I agree on that.
We've got to be able to trust people that... We've got to be able to trust people that, that we're dealing with, that, that are also employees of here and trust that, that they know what they're doing. I mean, we can't be experts at every little cotton picking thing that this kinda comes up against. That's impossible.
But if I may say, I mean, I called Kelpro, that was what they had instructed us to do. Yeah, I mean, so, and like you said, we're not experts in this.
But also, Tim installed a lot of the stuff.
But if you, I mean, I'm gonna be real honest, he's the one I don't trust. I'm just gonna say it, I don't trust him. I don't want my stuff related to him. I'm just, I'm being very open, but I'm being honest.
Well.
There's too many quirky things happening on this computer.
Trust or not, we do need to, I know nothing about the, the, other than I turn my computer on and if it doesn't work, I don't worry. Yeah, I, I do understand that, but I do believe that, that because Tim has done a lot of wiring and a lot of stuff that, I think, we didn't take his advice, but I think we could have had his input. I think we should have just had more input on it, I would rather have more input.
But I had spoke to Scott Sterling and so I told him that we were doing this, so, you know, he didn't apparently mention it to me.
No, that's.
I agree, and I, and I'm not, and this is nothing against Tim or his, his abilities. If, if, if he's the expert at this, and why is he an undershare and not an IT guy?
Exactly.
And same with Brandon Fetter, you know? I, I don't know, I don't think there's any easy solution to any of this and I, and frankly, I think it's just gonna get worse.
I think we're gonna have to contract with a specialized IT person because Brandon evidently, the same thing. We're asking him to do stuff that he doesn't know.
Exactly.
And that's not fair to him.
No, no, not at all.
It's unfair to him at all, so.
It's, uh.
You know, we.
Really, third party vendor for their IT is a better deal. And if you want me to start looking in there or have Tim can do or whatever.
I, I feel we need to look through this fiscal year. But when it, when it comes to budget time, we need to, we need to budget for this, for, for the courthouse and, and every, you know, everything.
He's, he's said that several times and I agree that we need a IT budget.
So, I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to hijack this, I, it was, it concerned me and I thought I'd go ahead and say it. So, thank you, sorry about that.
All righty, um, for, since our ADA is here, we need to look at item N. All right, is that the next one, item with him? Item N, okay, and Laura took professional services contract, and did you look at that and good with that?
I know, well, you're a laugh, go ahead.
Yeah.
I'm just one of these.
Yes.
I don't have an issue with it, so.
Okay, all right. We have a motion to approve the, uh, the architectural services for phase two of the courthouse renovation.
I assume, say.
That's move has seconds to approve the sign, the professional services contract for architectural services for phase two of the courthouse, all in favor?
Father?
Aye.
Ron?
Go ahead.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes on motion to be announced. We just wanted to ease this one, was it two? Okay. The next item on the agenda is item O, invoice from A C G for May twenty eighteen for Rock, unencumbered in F Y eighteen, or seventeen eighteen, we just look through.
Sherry, a contact we need about. Yes, my good cat, are you aware of it?
I was not aware of it, I thought the blanket had been done.
But I mean, after the.
Yeah, I knew after the, yes.
So, it was a work that was done in fiscal year seventeen eighteen, but P O was not encumbered.
Right, right, you wanna hand that to Steve?
And I did kinda visit with Steve about that.
That's the one that I, this is the item that I talked with Sherry about. Um, apparently, the purchase order guidelines were not followed. Um, and I talked to her that, you know, if you don't follow the purchase order guidelines, the county doesn't have any, um.
Didn't stand on?
Well, but I mean, the county, the county doesn't have, yeah, that's a good word, doesn't have a good, uh, doesn't have any obligation to pay us. And so people who do business with state government, they, I mean, the purchase order guidelines are there, they know that they have to comply with them and they weren't complied with. That being said, you had people that we've received services from that aren't gonna be receiving payments, so. Um, if the board wants, um, to reimburse these guys, we can admit, um, liability to these people and do the settlement contract as we've done before in the past. Uh, to, so that the vendors get paid. Um, that being said, you don't have to do that. Um, if they were to sue the county for unreimbursement of costs, they would lose because the purchase order guidelines weren't followed, so.
How much is it?
I, I, it's about the, probably less than ten thousand dollars. Nothing else like it.
That one's nine fifty. And nine fifty sixty is one.
Nine fifty and sixty six?
Yes. Um. Here's one that looks like, I can't think of this. Almost said ten thousand, but it looks like nine thousand, four seventy one eighty five. Like another nine sixty thirty three.
That's for Rock off six hundred and twenty.
It looks like there's a two thousand, three forty seven forty four. But you would need to do a separate, so, I mean, these need to be broken out.
Right.
Not put on the same line. And there's these, these run sheets, so. I don't know, based upon what's here, I don't have any idea of what we really owe. I mean, I need a, I need an accounting on this as to what we owe and who we owe it to. Is there's all these run sheets, so I don't know what the total is, 'cause, I mean, this is what I, I mean, this isn't an invoice. I mean, they haven't invoiced us for anything.
This is what Sherry sent to me.
Okay.
And we're sure it hasn't been paid, I mean, I've seen that, uh, church, church ever in your, your secretary. And I don't know when that change happened, but, uh, we didn't make sure that those hat indeed have not been paid in a blanket somewhere, I mean, if she, I mean, I'd have thought if we owed them some money, they would have sent us a bill, it looks like she's found some invoices and thinks they're not paid.
Yeah, I, I mean, she. She looked and compared it to, to blankets at the time.
But, but A C G has been calling you and saying, come on, where's my money? It's in May?
I haven't talked to them.
I mean, I don't know that we owe it. Well, I mean, I'll go back and check, I can.
Well, we can do it.
Yeah.
So, I, I'm not sure we owe it, but.
Well, here's, um, let's see, now, this is an invoice. What's the date on it?
Well, this is two thousand three hundred and forty seven forty four, and the date's on, that is, uh, June sixth.
June sixth, yeah. But there are purchase orders that are in there.
Right.
So.
See, and here says purchased order thirty seven, it's not a purchase order number on it, like, it's been in thirty seven ninety seven.
What was it, thirty seven ninety seven?
Thirty seven ninety seven.
That's easy enough.
To buy?
It says closed on six five.
That says Bradbury Trucking, so.
Oh, yeah, you're right, thirty seven, that's, that's trucking, that wouldn't be for the.
Yeah, and that was. These are all for the trucking, because this is H K cattle, H K cattle.
I'd say we need to figure that out, I don't, I, I, ask them if we owe them.
You have the capacity in your office, don't you, to pull up A C G?
Yeah.
And see what warrants were written.
That's what I was looking for, I should have found you.
Let's skip down to, uh, item to number nine to go into executive session.
I'm moving to enter into executive session.
No, no, we need to move, skip to item nine and.
I'm moving to skip to item nine and, and enter into executive session.
I'll second that.
Ron moves has seconds to skip in item nine and, and into executive session to both our A D As, all in favor?
Father?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Hess?
Go ahead.
All eyes on motion to be announced.
Oh, sorry. You want me to put your sign up?
Please, thank you. Please, thank you.
This one is not, is it?
It's connected to it. That one controls it.
Oh, okay, so it's on. No, like this.
Does that one have a mute?
I don't know. Oh, here, it's on the back side.
I don't think there's any sound. Is there a volume on this one at all? Is it a... It looks like it's an all or nothing.
Still no sound. But if that would mean that there's probably not a mic problem, but a keyboard problem? Oh, did you... At the bottom, yeah. Are these... Does this one appear nearby?
Well, I mean, all I ever do is do this, which deletes it.
Got volume now? You hear a sound?
Sounds back.
Yeah, it's not blinking anymore.
Okay.
All right, up there. Okay. Okay, so they have to be solid.
Yes.
All righty, we are on line again. Update on our competitive highway bridge program grant application now because today I need the letters. I take them to the city tomorrow.
As soon as I get out of here, I'm gonna start going around and picking up the letters that I do not have in my hand. I've had several people, eighteen, twenty people, say that they were going to get me letters, and I wrote them down as they were gonna get them to me, but I told them we had to index them by tonight.
Do you... Before you leave next, can I get... I gave you ten letters that you collected.
Yes.
They're right there, the originals. I'll leave those back. I made you a list of the ten that I have.
Well, I am going to bring you all of these letters that I have.
So, you want to keep the originals, ring on ones, or you want to keep the originals that are in that? These are the originals, right here.
You can keep them.
Keep those, those ten. And that's those ten right there on that list that I gave you.
Yes, and I had already had some of them marked off.
Okay.
Because I delivered some of them up to your shop.
Right, right.
Okay. In fact, I couldn't... I made me a list finally this weekend because I couldn't remember who I'd gotten letters from and who I hadn't, so I went back and made me a master list right here and started marking them off of the ones that I have, okay? Noda, you'd asked me down. They're getting... They're sending that. They're supposed to be faxing it to the shop or to the office here.
I said I'd go to Eden later today. I could go by there and pick up the original if you want me to.
That would be great. That would be great because it's just like Brad Rigger, he gave me two, but he faxed them to me.
Well, I mean, if they're pretty clear, I mean, they're okay. I'd like to have them. They like the originals, but I'm... Like, obviously, I got Inhofe's this morning, and I got Lucas's last week. Obviously, they're electronic, you know.
Okay. This is like Alfa Electric right here. Is that clear now?
Yeah, we can mark out the faxing with the top, okay?
And then these are the other two from Rigger's that I got sent to me.
Okay, they're not signed.
Well, he did not sign them.
Okay, all right.
He just sent them to me like that. I've been getting everybody that I've talked to to sign them, you know, and stuff, but...
So, do you want me to keep that original, or do you want to keep it?
No, I'm gonna give you all these. These are...
These are all your originals?
These are all my originals.
The originals, okay.
Now, you know, it's just like...
So, how many do you have there, Max? Because I know you have ten. I have that you received, so let's count what you have so we know where we're at. Count what you've got.
Eleven, twelve, fifteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, I guess twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. I have twenty-five in my hand right now.
Twenty-five, I guess next one.
Yeah, and I've got... I've got Noda, like I said.
Yeah, I'm getting Noda.
Alfa Electric is sending one, Noda's sending one, and Canopla is sending one. Actually, add one more to that because there's two of them, and one of them is Lowe's.
Okay.
And we're supposed to be getting one. They're having a meeting up at the... What do you call it, Hagneal or...
USDN.
Oh, so conservation. It's having a meeting this morning, and they're gonna write us a letter, and they're supposed to bring it to your shop, okay?
That brings you up to twenty-eight.
Yeah.
That you've got in hand.
That I have in hand, and I've got two of them up in my mailbox right now that I could say I have in my hand that they're gonna deliver, and I have five more that's supposed to be there by dinnertime, okay? And then the rest of these, I'll just have to... I'll have to go back and check, you know. Eighty-one feet up here, I've checked twice with them, and they still promised me a letter. You know, Richard Rapp, I haven't seen his letter yet, but, you know, and Kelly's auto was on that list, so we have it.
Yeah.
Randy Laney is supposed to be sending me two letters. You know, Brian Hendricks is gonna send me two letters. These are ones that I have to go back this afternoon and check on to get to you, okay?
Yeah.
But here's all the letters.
Thank you, Max.
You're welcome.
What do you got?
We've got... Right now, we've got thirteen in hand. I've got guys out this morning collecting letters. I have... They have... Of course, since we've been in the office. Sherry's even writing letters for people to sign as we speak. Oh, we got one from... Signed by an entire church congregation, so I thought that was pretty good. So, and as soon as we get done here, I'm gonna go back out and do more collecting.
You took them through?
We're trying to get close.
How many did I have?
Max, with the two that you've got to pick up and the five, you'll have thirty-five, not counting the ones that you mentioned that you said that would get you... I bet you're pretty... You'll have thirty-five for certain, and you've got those ones that you're gonna reach out to as well.
Yes, yes, and another one. Rapp's Insurance is gonna have it by ten o'clock at my shop.
So, I'll need you to deliver those to my shop by four, and if you don't get them by four, you'll need to bring them to my house because I...
By ten o'clock?
Yeah, I need them to my shop by four.
I had a question for you before you did. I took pictures.
That's great. I need the pictures.
Yeah, yeah, we were gonna send our pictures with the pictures.
Thank you. All right, sounds good. But I'll get with you to label them. Oh, I love that. That's good. Those are good, Max.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, perfect. Got someone on that page.
And I got Farmer and Get on a picture of Ridge.
Yeah, good.
And that was down by Bed and Breakfast.
Oh, good. Okay, I might need to get with you and tell... Say where they're at because I won't know where they're at.
Ella Teeters come up and picked up an application. She's come up to her farm, and that was a picture right east of her Bed and Breakfast out there, is what it is. She has not returned her letter, but she told me she would. She's one I have to call, but I can tell you whenever you call Ella, you're going to talk for a little bit.
Yeah. Ella Teeters?
Yes, Ella Teeters. She has a business down in Indiana.
Okay, yeah, that's great. Yeah, these... These are real good.
Okay.
That's good. I have... I've got sixty-five letters.
Wow, that's great.
I put in about two hundred hours in fifteen days, so I'm running on pretty low fuel, because it's been about till midnight, but it does amount to, in addition to having to write the part of the grant, and I'm still working with the grant holders on that. They called me today. Probably gonna meet with them tomorrow when I take these letters down to them, and I will ask them about slipping our other letters in there, but the more letters you have, it... Minimum is a hundred. Label is suggesting at two hundred, so, you know. When you're talking fifteen million dollars, guys, you can't just pretend it's not a big deal. How much time do you pay working out your campaign signs and calling people to support you? If you can't go write... And I've been writing a lot of letters, but if you can't go write your own letter and go talk to them and get them signed, then I'd say then you don't have your priorities straight because this is a fifteen million dollar project, and it should be the only thing you're working on, the only thing you should be working on right now because it's that important. So, I'm a little testy. I'll just say I'm a little testy, so I... I've taken this personally, and Cindy, thank you. I think you've collected four letters to do with...
I'll get the last, yes.
And got those, so even as our clerk, that's good that you've taken an interest in it, and we appreciate team players, so, thank you.
Well, I have several letters that I haven't... Like I said, I have Shane Ridge. I haven't got there yet.
I reached out to Shane Ridge myself, three different emails, and phone call, and crickets.
I've got the vice president, just great agenda.
Very good.
Good.
I thought about when you called in.
And now Kansas City. But Pat, we need some more letters, and we really gonna have to step it up because we gotta have some letters. So, I'm gonna be... We'll be fairly disciplined if you fail on our letter-writing deal, just for the record.
I've been doing it, Cindy, okay?
I know, but...
Okay, and then let's back up to a week ago Friday when you called me right before I was leaving to go to my kid's ballgame, all right, and you chewed my ass out because I'm not... I'm doing that instead of going to my kid's ballgame? That is BS.
And I think I told you I was pretty stressed out, and I apologized. Did I not apologize?
I set the phone down because you... It was no, "Hey, Pat, how you doing? What's going on today?" It was, "This is what we gotta get done," and when I told you that?
And I said, "Yes, I'm sorry. You're right. Your family does come first."
Okay, that's what I'm very... I'm likewise upset.
Yeah, well...
Because...
I just... I'll tell you, thirteen letters really in fifteen days is... Maybe that's where we're at, but fifteen million dollars is something that we're...
I understand that.
To be working on.
I understand.
All righty, let's see. Anything else on that? All right, road crossing permits?
None.
None. Do we have any new business? Max, do you have any new business?
Uh, no, no new business.
I have none.
I have none. Commissioner's comments?
I have a CED meeting tomorrow.
CED's tomorrow?
Yeah.
I don't know about that.
Yeah, 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 and, you know, nowhere on the agenda is the discussion.
Oh, because I forgot. I've got to take those letters down to the city, and I told them I would be there, but it's not on there.
Well, I'm reading this again because I'm not sure, okay? There's a discussion for the Grant County District One and Canadian County Material Request Application, which you guys have done, and there's an application for District One. There we go. Do you see it anywhere, Pat?
Yeah, I'm looking myself. I don't see it.
I do not see it, so I'm not sure whether that's going to be brought up or not, but...
Well, it can't be because it's...
It's not on here.
Yeah, and it's... We've known about it before the posting of the agenda, so it can't be new business. I mean, we've been discussing this for a couple of weeks, so...
Yeah, yeah. Well, Donnie, I was with Donnie when we went to ODOT, and we talked and expressed interest that we need to try to include other counties into this, but he also informed me it was not our decision, the CED's decision or the county. It was Patterson's and his group that decided that Grant County would be going forward, so, you know, I was prepared to discuss that, but when I got the agenda, it wasn't on there, so I don't think there's...
Well, I won't be there. I'm gonna be taking those letters down.
Okay.
I'll work on that city down there.
Well, that's fine. I have a Noda meeting Thursday down in Eden. I... It hasn't been announced yet. It won't be until after about the grant, but...
Okay.
We've been working on the letters. I've been talking all weekend. I made, you know, I made copies of that and took it and delivered them, hand-delivered them, and helped people with their writing. Everybody wants to make it short, you know, and stuff, and I understand that, but it's... We've been working on that, you know what I mean? I think it would be a wonderful deal. Everybody that I talked to thought it was a wonderful deal and supported this, you know. Hopefully, we got it, so... I guess ABC over at there has moved all their crushing equipment out over there.
Oh, I didn't know that.
They are...
Yeah, they don't even have any rock, so...
I didn't know that.
Yeah, they are in the process of changing hands, I think.
Oh, so we're gonna manage the quarry, or is it...
They are... They're kind of tight-lipped on...
They are.
On what they're doing over there.
I've got an idea that they're going to be under a new heading, under a new name, taken over by somebody else, but they haven't verified that. So, that slowed us up on getting to Rock. There was some... We were going over there this morning, but they couldn't get the motor started.
Well, I'd say so, where does that leave us open to get rock?
At least the seven mile for another almost two dollars a ton.
And twenty more miles, I thought of that.
Well, is it really that... Well, maybe from the south side, maybe like from where I am.
Yeah.
Maybe not, but probably more so for you, probably another five miles or so.
Wow.
Isn't it just very nice to kill there?
Yeah.
I'm trying to think exactly where it is, and I can't remember.
We've bought rocks for a long time. Yeah, we've bought rocks for a long time.
I am getting rock backhauled from...
Yeah, your stuff from the house.
House, which is helping me on my freight, but I'm to the point where I need my trucks doing stuff, you know, which I've got plenty of shake of the haul and...
Yeah, right, yeah.
But anyway, it's gonna affect us, and, you know, we all know our money coming in has went down, and so one of these days, that's gonna be what we do otherwise, hiring them second for trucking coming in because we just can't...
My dad wore a rock. Nobody wants it to go back to the boat.
Nope, that's exactly right.
Oh, you've been happy then.
That's all I have.
Okay, that one you got.
Breakdowns was the... Just the last weekend nutshell. We didn't have a date. There wasn't at least two things broke down at once, and having a mechanic on vacation.
Of course.
That sucks.
Well, that is. Sometimes you can say, "Huh, I guess we always broke down. I just didn't realize it," because the mechanic takes care of it sometimes.
They can be overwhelmed because you got too much to do.
Well, and these have all just been really fluke deals that I don't want to say major, but enough to shut you down for waiting on parts that had to get ordered, you know?
Yeah.
And...
You got everything tore down.
Yeah.
You couldn't anything else in there to tear down.
So, we're still trying to put things back together. Hopefully, this week, you know, with it being short, we'll get something done, I hope, and next week's even shorter week. Isn't next week Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and we keep finding more things from the flood. As we try to fix some things, we'll find a few other things that are... Been wrong, so, anyway, we're just... Please be patient with us. This is a slow process. That's all I got.
Okay, well, the snow was something. We had a lot of ice on our roads still this morning. Kind of the way the highways are off there, there's much colder ice. It's been... What, between... A lot of... I don't know if there's like two or three vehicles in Manchester today.
Really, man?
Yeah, so I think we got a little more ice. We've got a little ice up here than we do down here.
Well, Manchester is significantly more worse than down here in Waukegan, and so we had more...
Did you get more ice or just...
We had both, yeah. We had ice and snow.
We just got straight snow.
It rained for a little bit before it started really freezing up there, and that's what made it better.
Yeah, so, anyway, so today I got people out just... We're kind of doing some assessing on some different things. So, we still haven't got everything loaded, so we've got to probably get our mowers. And the ground's frozen now, you know, you can at least knock some of that down and clean it up for intersections are really bad, so we're gonna start hitting some of those and working on that grant pretty much for the year, so... Is that... I think that one's just not ideal, so...
Oh, my gosh, I'm making a motion for your drone, please. Ben moved your second law in favor?
At eleven twenty-nine, he has moved drunk. He's in law in favor.
Bob, it...
Well, yes.
All right.
All right. We're officially in charge. Okay, Commissioner has...